We don't have conventional driveway, but he always talks about it.
I believe we're ready. Nick, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
A little louder.
Can you hear me? Hello? Check, check. One, two.
We can bring it up a little.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Talking?
We're working on it, Nick. We can hear you, but we want it a little louder.
All right. Just let me know when you need me to keep talking.
Okay, you'll just have to speak up louder.
Okay, I will talk as loud as I can.
All right. All right, let's go ahead and get started. Let me call to order the meeting of the Highlands Town Board of Commissioners for February 20th, 2025. Our first item will be a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. So will you join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Now we will all stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The next item is a statement of conflict of interest which is posted in the agenda. And I'll remind all the commissioners, if any of the business that we will conduct tonight, if there's a conflict of interest, you are to disclose that conflict. Item number four has public comments. So at this time, I will be calling for people to come forward, state your name, and make a public comment. We'd appreciate you keeping your comments to three minutes or less. But at this time, I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to make a public comment.
Thank you for having me. Heather Lowe, Brian Winkler. I just wanted to state that I've talked to several people about property lines and disputes. And it's my understanding that the town of Highlands does not cover that. It's a civil issue. So if there's a difference in that, please, somebody just let me know because I want to, you know, do the right thing. What I'm here tonight about is an easement on a deed. Behind Carolina Way, we have a 10-foot alley. And I went down to the Department of Deeds because of various other things. And it says that we, as owners of the building, have to give a 10-foot easement. The easement is strictly for utilities and repairs and repairs to buildings. It is not a public road. It is not for private parking. It's not any of those things other than that. So what I am looking to do, and I don't know that, again, we're talking about property lines. So perhaps it's not in your area, but I am looking to use and utilize my whole lot. And my lot goes beyond the alleyway. It goes over into like a little bit of a woods. And so I talked to Franklin County, Franklin, Macon County, and they said that the easement is not discretionary. It is at the owner's discretion of where to put that easement. So that I could expand my property line and put the alleyway closer to my property line so that I can use my actual property behind my building. So I wanted to mention that to you in case there is somebody or someone who wants to talk to me about that. I have all of the paperwork. And again, it says that the easement grant is for utilities and maintenance. It does not qualify for anything else or use of business. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. It's something that I would like to do, which is to utilize my property behind my building more and create an alleyway that is a little bit closer to my property line.
Okay. Josh, do you have a comment?
Well, I consulted Macon County and they said it was at the property owner's discretion.
Well, we, our utility easements, we've had those and people have done things like planted bushes or put fences over those easements where we have water lines. And when we have a break, those things are removed because we have to have access to the utilities.
But this is a common access behind eight different buildings. It accesses all the way from Dennis DeWolff's building at 434 Carolina Way, all the way out to the end and back to the street. So it's only an attorney can answer that question. Macon County really can't even answer that question.
Why would an attorney be able to answer?
Because he can look at what it's deeded to, because I think there's deeded access to others as well beyond you. So you moving it, then they're not, I don't know. An attorney can answer. None of us are.
No, and I'm not either, but I do know that according to the deed, it says it's discretionary of the property owner. I just have to give up 10 feet behind my building, you know, so that the utilities can be accessed. That's it.
It's, it's an attorney can answer your question. We can't.
Then may I ask you this? So let's say that I speak to an attorney, says, yes, you can. Then what is the next step?
Your attorney can tell you that. I mean, I hate, I'm not trying to brush you off. I'm just telling you.
No, I don't get brushed off, but I'm telling you, I don't get brushed off.
It's not, it's not us. I'm just telling you.
Okay, so this, so this is why I wanted to bring it up.
It's a legal issue with an attorney, because if you move it, then you're going to have to move the easement. And then you'll have to move it with an attorney and record it, and it'll have to make sure it doesn't impede the continuous aspect of that 10-foot alley. So.
Well, there's, there's nothing in the deed that says it has to be continuous, just that I have to just give that land, which is just 10 feet.
You're one building and a condo building, and it was all done at the same time. So you'll have to ask.
I understand one building and a condo. I mean, I'm going through this right now, how one person can affect everybody. I understand that very clearly. So anyway, so I take you at your word. Go see an attorney. And then after that, I guess I just go through Macon County. As long as your utility trucks and people can get through to repair that, then I'm in compliance.
Again, you're going to have to ask your attorney. I don't know.
Nick, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, yeah. So can you all hear me? Okay?
Yes, speak up a little.
Okay, I'm going to speak as loud as I can. All right. So that is correct. We cannot provide any legal advice. What I would recommend, is this, I'm still not clear. Is this a town easement that is located behind her property?
No, it's a private easement.
Well, if it's a private easement, then the town has no concern, the town is not weighing in on that. That's a, that's a private matter that you need to consult with an attorney on and work with that area on. We cannot, the town nor the county can provide any legal advice on that situation. So I would recommend you reach a private attorney to determine what your rights are with that easement for a private easement.
Okay, so the town doesn't have any say over that?
He can't hear you if you're not talking.
Could you ask him?
No, well, you have the mic.
Oh, I have. Okay, sorry. Sorry. So the town has no jurisdiction over the private easement?
That's correct. If it is a, if it is a, a private easement and it's not a town easement or a utility easement that the town controls, we have no say on that. That's, that's a private matter.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you very much.
We have any more public comment?
Seeing none, let us now move on to the next item. And that would be to review and approve the agenda. And I do think we have several changes, Josh?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have several changes. The first being under consent agenda, appoint Nick Tosco as town attorney. We'd like to pull that out of the consent agenda and actually label that as number nine. We talked about after the consent agenda, and that is to appoint Nick Tosco, town attorney, as well as approve the agreement. The second would be to remove number 11, the Town of Highlands mobile app proposal. Tyler Trantham, our presenter for that tonight, has come down with an illness late this afternoon and will not be available. And two, the third one, remove number 16, which is the Highlands Outdoor Recreation Use Policies amendments. And that is in order to allow our town attorney to review that before the next meeting.
Okay. Any other changes?
I'll make a motion to approve it as presented with the changes that Josh noted.
Okay, second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Thank you very much. The next item will be the approval of the January 16th regular meeting minutes. Do we have any changes, clarifications, or corrections?
Still moved.
Okay. All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand and saying aye. Thank you. Okay, the next would be the reports. And I will start with the mayor's report. And I'm going to say this, I'm going to send a video out. And that is, we will be having the power outage on Wednesday, the 26th of February. That's next Wednesday. It'll start at 8:00 in the morning and go through hopefully 6:00 PM. So everyone needs to be aware of that and be prepared. I've received a question this week from some people that live out on Hicks Road in that area. They're not really, Town of Highlands electric customers, they get their supply from Duke Energy. And they were concerned they might also lose power. And the Duke folks say that that might be a possibility. And they plan on sending out a direct notice to anybody that will lose their power on the Duke system in that area 48 hours before the outage. So that will help answer that question. If anybody though pays Highlands electric bill, they will be affected. If people live in town, and we have some people that live in town on some outer areas that are on Haywood system, they should not be impacted by this. So we'll hopefully get the word out that everyone understands about this power outage. And I won't be getting any calls that 8:05 saying, why didn't you let us know that we were about to have this power outage? We're trying to get the word out.
We do send power to Horse Cove. We do send power to Horse Cove.
We have people on Horse Cove.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they understand.
They will lose the power too. Yeah. So if you are a customer of the Town of Highlands, you will be impacted. Then I wanted to say that this is going to be a major effort. We've just been told that there might be as many as 129, 130 workers from Duke and their subcontractors doing this job. There'll be, you know, from starting on Mirror Lake Road, starting on 64, going out toward Hicks Road toward Zachary. There'll be, you know, traffic will be limited and blocked except for people that have to get in and out of their homes. But this will be a day where people that use that shortcut, that go around Highlands will need to, you know, find another way to get out on 64 going toward Cassius.
Do we have a sign out there now telling people, you know how they say this road's going to be closed the 26th or something?
No, but we could do that with our new digital sign.
Yeah.
We could put it out at 64 and Mirror Lake right there.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Lots of people cut through there and that's going to be a big problem.
Yep. Okay.
Well, it's not the power outage, it's not being able to use that road that cut through Hicks Road. Way off it.
Can we get, can we get another one from the county?
I would actually not be able to use the road, have it before that day. So they have an opportunity to say, okay, I'm going to have to go into town to get you through to wherever I'm going. Colsejo, wherever Cassius, where I'm coming from, from Franklin to that way. Don't you, don't y'all think?
The road is heavily used, totally.
It is heavily.
Totally.
You know how they, we would say, you know, between such and such a date, such and such a time, it's going to be closed to through traffic.
Yeah, I honestly think that announcement is even more important than the fact that the power's going to be out.
Because I think everybody knows that.
Yeah, and Duke will have the traffic control system in place on that day.
Yeah, we can definitely, I think the sign would be, would be better.
Okay.
Instead of the outage would be better for, you know, traffic control there at 64 and Mirror Lake. Because Mirror Lake will be closed from 64 to the bridge. And then Hicks Road will be closed from the, the bridge there at Mirror Lake to Zachary. Because that's where the bulk of the, of the work will be going on there. So people in like Big Pine, Big Pine's probably the most affected. They won't, they won't have another way, you know, in or out. So those folks need to be prepared. I think Miramont can go out of Bonnie Drive toward Flat Mountain. So I think, I think Big Pine's going to be the, the most affected.
And we sent a code red message out about the outage already.
If we put the traffic sign out now, they have a week to figure out that they can't go that way.
We will do that.
Okay. And also, I want to, Officer McCall, Leah McCall, she was just, please stand up, Leah. Let me, we want to congratulate you for being the officer, law enforcement officer of the year with the first responders and the Macon County Chaplains group. So thank you very much. And then also want to express on behalf of the town, our appreciation for the folks that committed, committed donations to our upgrading of our kitchen here at the community building. I know the Highlands Rotary Club donated funds. The Mountaintop Rotary Club did so also. Highlands Decorating Center contributed. Bryson's Grading and Paving, the Dry Sink, Wilson Gas Service, and Reeves Hardware all contributed to this effort. And I know at the Rotary Club, two weeks ago, Doc Wilson presented, Josh, on behalf of the town, a check for, it was for $51,000, correct, Josh?
Correct.
So we appreciate that because that's a first-rate kitchen facility now. So I really appreciate that support there. And also finally, I want to thank the ABC Board for their diligent work in developing the old fire department into what I think is one of the finest ABC stores in North Carolina now. And also I want to thank Kevin Vincent, the manager of the ABC store and all of his staff. They did a wonderful job over a few days period in real tough conditions of rain and everything. Moving from the Highlands Plaza store all the way to this new facility. If you get a chance, go by and, and look at the new facility and their displays. And this is going to be a, a store that will be, you know, giving back to this community for many years to come. So congratulations to everyone that was involved in that.
I visited today. I didn't, I didn't buy anything though, but I did go by the, no, I'm joking. I only spent $300 at the ABC store today, but it is pretty impressive.
Yeah. And, and you know, we should always emphasize, when you buy liquor in Highlands, that money stays in Highlands. So.
But they were, yeah, it was good. There was good bourbon, so.
Yeah. And that, it'll give them a lot of flexibility. I was, I was over there after they had moved and they, in their back warehouse. And Kevin was saying, the difference now is we can, you know, buy on, sometimes they have specials, the ABC system, where they can buy pallets of liquor and it really is at a good discount. And it's, it will be a real advantageous system for the ABC store. So that's all I have. And now I will turn it over to the commissioners for any updates or reports.
Yeah, one, one thing, Mayor, maybe you said, I didn't, I didn't hear it though, if you did, is the, just want to thank you for putting together the, the meeting with the county commissioners and the Town of Franklin. That was really well attended, and I think that was one of the more productive meetings we've ever had. And also wanted to say to that point, so like, it was kind of interesting, as we went around the table, one of the things, I know everybody's kind of sick of hearing about me talking about the playground, but of course, the town of, and I'm not bitter or anything, not going to say that, but of course, the Town of Franklin was awarded the Partif grant. But I thought it was interesting in, in talking to those guys that they were awarded a $500,000 grant from Partif, but it was a dependent upon them, they're having to double that with their fundraising. And here we are in Highlands and we were not awarded the Partif grant, but we were now at $1.3 million. Like, that's phenomenal. This speaks worlds for this, like, community. And we're about right now $350,000 short of our goal. But we are, we do have that grant that's, that's still being, that's going to be announced on June 3rd. And I will say, I want a couple of people I want to thank, and that's, there's a, there's a woman with the Southwestern Commission, Becca Scott, who is the one that's actually doing the grant writing for us, and she's phenomenal. And then the other person I want to really thank is our own Carlton Wheatley, who, one thing we learned this week is that we needed to have a detailed map outlining like the existing park and what the new, new area is going to look like, how that impacts like the Kelsey Hutchinson Trail, where that all comes together. And he created just like a really brilliant map that we'll be able to submit with that application. So I'm really proud of that. And one other thing I did want to mention is that, so I was, and it's amazing too how like the minutes of our meetings are not just looked at by people in Highlands, but people outside of Highlands. So a company in Texas who was also in the playground business reached out to me recently. And they are also, they are very interested in talking to us. And so I, I've been in contact with them. And they're putting a plan together that Commissioner Weller and, and some others that, that are on our original group, Kim, and you'll be notified about this, that we're going to meet and look at another plan. So we have, so we're getting various bids for this, so we're not just committing to obviously the first bid. And I think that's going to be something that's required anyway. So again, I'm just super proud of what Highlands has, has put together and where this is going. And I'm hoping, starting this summer, that everybody is going to see the, you know, the fruit from all that, that work. Very proud of that. So anyway, thank you all.
Thank you. I've got a question. We've raised private money already. The Park Health people wouldn't expect us to add additional money. We could retroactively actively count that as a part of the community.
This isn't a Partif grant. This is like an accessibility in parks grant, which is like a different coming from, it's not from Partif or through Partif.
We're not going to apply for a Partif?
At this point, no. At this point, we're going through, we're getting, we're going all, all, you know, all we can get from this accessibility.
It's a timing thing too.
Timing, yeah. So this is, so the accessibility in parks grant was, was a grant that was available at the same time as the Partif grant that we applied for, but they did not give away all their money, which is like a problem I wish I had. And then, so anyway, so they're opening up a second round of, of applications. So again, $350,000 and we are there.
Right.
I just wanted to add that, you know, there was a number of requirements along the way that has, you know, that Becca has, has emailed us, and I know Brian's been on the emails. And it, and it was a lot of work. And every, every one of those requirements, Commissioner Steeler's picked up and he's handled those. And there's been a lot of meetings, you know, a lot of consulting with different folks, including Carlton about maps and things like that. So he is, he is to be thanked because he's handled all those requirements.
Thank you.
So we'll just check off all the requirements that we've done them.
And it's supposed to be submitted, I think next, the next few weeks.
March 3rd, I think it's due. But I will say though, that, you know, we've met with about five or six different representatives, and I, and I will give them credit and do time of individuals that work with children with disabilities that understand like what, what, what makes a playground, you know, especially accessible. So like these people, like it was amazing, like as I contacted them, that they just, they were just like, I mean, blown away that they weren't even asked in the fact that I spent, you know, a couple of hours with each one of them and got some great ideas on, on what to make this playground really, really special.
Okay, all right.
Stay tuned.
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to bring up, I think I spoke with everybody individually, but I guess I was making a request to, for the board retreat to change from March 6th to March 13th, if there's any action needs to be taken. And if everybody's still good with that, I just wanted to bring that up. And whatever we need to do formally to make that happen, just wanted to mention it.
I'm good with that. I may be just about a half hour late, but that's fine, I think.
But I did want to say that this location is occupied, so it would be up to arson crash frame at the city center.
Okay, like the last year.
On that day.
Yeah.
So if the board wanted to approve the change, then.
Just so long as the press knows.
That's part of the reason why I brought it up.
Okay, everybody in agreement that we'll meet on that day for the town retreat. All right. Okay, our next item would be the consent agenda. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Josh, your report, town manager.
I do have an update. I did call or email the DOT on a caution light that's supposed to be installed at Little Bear Pen. Was supposed to be last fall and in the spring, and now they're saying that they've been set back because of Helene. And it will probably be more like June before that's installed. So.
But we've already paid for that.
We've already paid for that.
And the installation and everything.
Correct.
And at one point, they, they had to order some parts that have now arrived.
They did. Hopefully, hopefully all of them are in. It sounds like, it sounds like they're just not able to, to get to the installation until around June.
What about the crosswalk? Did you look at that again?
So the crosswalk will be talked about at the retreat. We did get some feedback back from the DOT. Lamar and I have looked at it and come up with a plan, so that'll be presented at the retreat for you guys to decide where to go with that. Also, the DOT, the culvert underneath Horse Cove Road between the Episcopal Church and Mountain Fresh is deteriorated. They've been looking at it for about five years. And it's become to the point where they've got to do something. I know the Episcopal Church did their improvements there in front. So now they're going to come in, they've had a company come in from South Carolina, so they're going to be lining that pipe. So it's, it's an operation, it's pretty, pretty neat, but they, they shoot like a plastic in there, they blow it up, and then it hardens. And then they go into the top in a couple of places and fill, flow will fill in there to fill in any voids. So they'll be doing that probably with, probably within the next month, where they're permitting.
So that would decrease the capacity, right?
That's what the concern was at first, when they looked at it last year and got ready to do it before the church did all their improvements. They were, they were worried that it would affect the capacity, so they were going to have to tear the road up, which was, you know, the last thing they wanted to do. So there've been some changeover in employees there at the DOT. So they brought this company in, they looked at it again. This company says, yes, we can come in there and we can do that, and it won't constrict the flow. So.
It does make the pipe like an inch or two diameter smaller when they do that, but pretty impressive how they do it.
And, and the improvements that were done by the church actually are going to increase capacity because they increased the catch, the church paid to increase catch basins. Everything was DOT approved, obviously.
But that's on the down side.
It is, but, but it. It, it is, but, but it also allows them to do it the way they're doing it. Cause if the church hadn't have done anything, they'd be replacing the pipe is my understanding. Cause there's a sewer line that runs through the pipe.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the good news is.
We, we fixed that. Now it's in a basin. It used to be part of the pipe.
They avoid major excavation of tearing up the road.
They still want backing up and doing, you know.
Department of Transportation's drainage system and also there, there uh, there's a sewer line in there as well, as well as a water line. So they're, they're being able to avoid that with this procedure. So.
Okay.
Uh, the last thing I have is I want to congratulate Larry Holt Sanitation Supervisor. He will be retiring February 28th.
Oh.
After about 30 years.
He's been around longer than you, Abby.
30 years? No, he hadn't been.
It's close to it. Okay. Alright. Let us now look at the consent agenda. Any questions? We have moved the appointment of Nick Tosco to a regular agenda item. So you have a, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye. Thank you. And then next will be the appointment of um, of Nick Tosco as our town attorney. We have met in closed session and interviewed Nick. And this is basically a public formality to confirm him as our town attorney. Um.
Same, same firm, just different attorney.
Just a different attorney, but um, we researched this, Nick and was in on it. And our cha- town charter does say you have to identify officially the town attorney. So that is what we're doing.
And Nick has worked very close
Yeah.
with Bob in the past. So Nick, I'm glad, I'm glad you're aboard and I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of uh, Nick Tosco as our town attorney.
Second.
Okay, very good. And, and to answer the question, yes, we will still be retaining corner and sprue and the terms of our agreement will not change. Okay, so with that, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Okay. Nick, you're official now. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Okay. Alright. Item number 10 is a public hearing, Parkside Partners B1 conditional zoning request. Do I have a motion to open up the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Thank you. We have the public hearing open and the first item will be staff comments. Michael Mathis.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Nick, just to confirm one thing, um, I'm going to give my staff comments now, then it'll be public comment time. And then will they close the public hearing and then the applicants can come up? Or do they have to speak during that public hearing time?
They would speak during the public hearing.
Okay, so I told you wrong. So y'all will come up and present. Okay. I had a feeling. Um. So Parkside Partners Acquisitions LLC submitted a conditional zoning application to the planning department on November 6th, 2024. According to the application, the petitioner is requesting a conditional rezoning from B3 commercial to be one commercial conditional zoning district. Subject property, which is 299 Oak Street, is 1.09 acres and is located in the balance of the water supply watershed three. According to section 4.5.1 of the Unified Development Ordinance, conditional zoning district decisions are legislative decisions subject to judicial review using the same procedures and standards of review as applied to general use zoning district decisions. Before the Board of Commission rules on a conditional zoning request, the UDO requires zoning and planning boards to review the proposal and give their recommendations. The applicant is proposing to construct eight detached single-family dwellings on the parcel. According to section 8.3.1 of the UDO, the B1 zoning district allows one residential dwelling per 2,400 square feet of lot size. The subject's property lot size is 47,480 square feet. If rezoned to B1, the UDO would allow up to 19 residential units. However, as I've mentioned, they're adding eight detached residential units. To serve the eight residential units, the applicant is proposing to add between 28 and 30 onsite parking spaces. Section 9.1.7 of UDO requires two onsite parking spaces for each dwelling unit. Additionally, there is a deed requirement reserving 12 parking spaces for the use and benefit of Oak Square property. Under party of the first part herein, his successors and signs and all others who may now or hereafter have the right to use the same. Therefore, the UDO indeed require that the applicant provide a minimum of 28 onsite parking spaces. Uh, according to section 8.4.3 of the UDO, non-residential lots in the watershed three balance of the watershed that exceed one half acres are permitted a maximum of 50% built upon area. The post-construction BUA calculation says 44% on my report, but I think it's actually with the updated site plan, y'all got 49% now. Yeah, 49.1, I believe. If I'm reading that right. So to continue, the zoning board reviewed this application on December 11th, 2024. Their recommendation is per, uh, to approve the conditional rezoning as submitted. The planning board reviewed this request on December 16th, 2024. Their recommendation is to also approve the conditional rezoning as submitted. And one thing I brought up with the applicants, um, Josh had actually noticed it before the meeting. But it looks like if you look at the site plan, they're going to demo the existing sidewalk that runs down through there. Put in a planting strip and then add a five-foot concrete sidewalk that will go down in front of the development and tie in. I would just ask that an easement is provided by them for uh, public use of that sidewalk.
Okay.
That was, that was going to be one of my questions. This is, this is a conditional use. How specific? Is this site plan specific?
Yes.
And that may be a, a question for Nick. Is it really, really this specific? I mean, if they deviate from it, they have to come back to us or, or, or what?
Nick, do you, go ahead.
Yeah, so uh, it is site specific. It is a site plan. The ordinance, I believe, Michael, you correct if I'm wrong, it probably lays out when you can do minor amendments to the site plan versus when you do major amendments to the site plan. Uh, you know, major major site plan amendments usually have to go through the conditional rezoning process again versus minor amendments that can be done administratively. Is that right, Michael?
Like an addition of a retaining wall or something.
They've given approvals before and the, and the architects give us these beautiful renderings and we think it's going to look like this and then it turns out it doesn't. But I just want to make sure that this is part of the record and so this is what has to be done.
Yeah, so from a site plan specific, it would be site plan specific. Now the renderings of the uh, exterior elevations, those will still have to meet our.
But one of the things was the sidewalk because
Yeah.
I think our sidewalk is probably now on public property. They would be moving that into private.
It, it's actually going to be a split, but yes, it'll be like partially on right of way, partially outside. So at that point, yeah, that's why I would ask that they just go ahead and grant us an easement for public use.
And do you, do you know if they have, or maybe I'll just ask them, do you know if they have, I know they had, they were supposed to have 12 additional parking for the across the street um, Cannon building. And they said they negotiated it down to 10. Do they have that in writing or do we, should we require that?
They, they can.
Okay.
If y'all want to.
I just didn't want them to have to come back and change it because somebody changed ownership of that building.
Yeah, no, I understand. And what's, actually I think we looked at the minutes and the town had only issued 10. And then somehow the deed went to 12.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, I believe. Okay, yeah, it's because there was five apartments.
Two per, per apartment.
And they meet that requirement currently. There are five apartments.
I'm going to let them answer for any changes like that, but um, and then if, of course you've got any other questions for me, I can come back.
Okay.
Mister, Mister Mayor, before, can you hear me?
Yes.
Before we get the applicant to speak, uh, just uh, wanted to alert the, the board that the easement is going to need to be a condition to the uh, to the rezoning uh, request approval. And under state law, that has to be agreed to um, in writing by the applicant. So I just want to make sure that uh, the, the board's aware of that. We'll need to get that uh, you know, from them. We don't, we don't have to have the writing right now, but we need to get their consent right now. And then they'll have to sign something consenting to that.
Yes.
Okay.
And also I do want to mention, I forgot, um, if you do decide to approve uh, this, you have a copy of the statement of consistency and reasonableness in your packet. And of course you'll have to acknowledge the ordinance amendment as well. And the plat. Am I good?
Okay. Alright, thank you, Michael. And our next uh, um, stage would be public comments and we'll invite the um, the owners requesting the, the change to come forward and make a statement.
Uh, good evening, Mayor. Uh, Board of Commissioners, I'm Gary Matthews with Parkside Partners. I've got my business partner Kyle Jinks, who will also be presenting tonight. Um. Before I get started, I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't uh, thank Josh, Michael, Lamar and other staff for helping us uh, figure this site out. We've had multiple iterations, uh, multiple site plans. Uh, and we think we've finally cracked the code and are excited to hopefully be moving forward after tonight. Um. The site is a tough site, uh, grade, grade wise um, and access wise. Um, and again, I think we've, we've cracked that code. Um. So you asked about the parking. Uh, so we did go back uh, with Josh's help and researched the zoning uh, for the Oak Square development. And it, it was uh, 10 spaces that were required. For some reason, the deed uh, when uh, the Cannon family sold that parcel, they, they put 12 down. But both the owners of the Oak Square development have agreed uh, that if we uh, move forward with this acquisition that we can uh, in writing uh, modify it to 10 uh, spaces. Um, so they, they see this development as a drastic improvement to the temporary parking spaces that are on the gravel lot uh, behind the right of way now. Access getting in to the tough, it's right at the intersection of Oak and Maple. Uh, they think this is going to be a massive improvement for them and uh, have uh, agreed where the legal documents are back and forth and they would have been executed and held in escrow until we were the owners. Um, but uh, one of the one of the owners is in Italy and has been for the past two months, but they will make sure it's signed uh, ahead of us moving forward with submitting our permits. Uh, we'll make that public record. Um, I don't know if there's any other questions on that before I, I keep going.
Not, not on that specifically.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, thank you. Um, other things, uh, we, we did submit uh, some minor tweaks to the site plan. We've uh, because it is site plan specific, we, we'd asked in the previous uh, presentations we did with both planning and zoning, we did note that the two lots that are on the, the backside of the site that we would need some flexibility on those. Um, those are larger uh, footprint homes and we're trying to get master on main for those two lots. Uh, and we, and we think we figured that out. So that was one of the items that kind of shifted around. The other thing that we did was there's uh, the previous site plan that was presented had the stairs kind of leading up from our back private drive coming up at the corner of Oak and Maple. And we've moved that over to the far side of our driveway to create a direct access point from the 10 residents that'll be using those parking spaces to allow them up. And it also allowed us to really enhance that corner, um, not having stairs that lead down behind the town of Highlands wall that basically holds up uh, Maple. Uh, getting the constructability of those stairs and getting those, all those structures to work in a very tight space was uh, proven to be not wise to pursue. So we, we decided to slide that over. And again, that'll allow us to add a lot of landscaping at that corner, uh, which I think will be a drastic improvement. Uh, one of the other things I do want to note on, on our site plan, and we've uh, been working with Lamar on uh, getting um, sewer, gravity sewer uh, to this site. And there's a main trunk line that runs along Oak, which is really too high for us to be able to use. Uh, and then it goes um, outside uh, away from town and then turns and goes uh, through the town green and back to that, I guess, service uh, area where that private or utility driveway is.
Back to the old site.
Yes, ma'am. So what we, as part of this request, if, if, get y'all's approval tonight, we're going to need an easement to uh, run our sewer line and attach into that main. Uh, Lamar's looked at our proposed plan. Uh, I think he agrees. It's the most logical place to tie in. Uh, but as part of this agreement, we'll uh, y'all mentioned an easement that we would need to provide. We definitely understand that. Um, in fact, I'm surprised there's not one there now because the property uh, extends uh, current property line extends past that sidewalk now, but we'll get that cleaned up. We think uh, adding the, the landscape strip along uh, the public parking, if you will, along Oak uh, is a good buffer. Um, and I think the folks that are using that sidewalk, uh, I think it'll make that experience feel better as well. Not being right up on the roadway. So we're more than happy to grant that easement. Um.
I had one question about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, uh, is the town, uh, because these trees would, uh, soon these look like trees to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, they will be in uh, basically in the town right of way or the town property, right? Cause it's where the, 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 the
Well.
The, the uh, sidewalk is now.
Yeah, I think our property line actually extends uh, past that sidewalk currently. Uh, but we would be planting those trees and it could be an easement associated with those as well.
If it's not town property, then it's your ball to uh, um, maintain that.
Sure. Yeah, we have no problem doing that. We want our front door to be standing tall. Yes, ma'am. Uh, any other questions there? Okay. Um, I think I've hit most of the, the high points that I wanted to cover. Um, do, uh, turn it over to Kyle Jinks and talk about our marketing brochure that was also included in the updated packet that we sent out.
Yeah, so start out by again, that's what Gary said. Thank you all so much for the help. These two guys have been um. Uh, for the help that Michael and Josh have been giving us over golly now more than a year since um, probably actually 15 months since we first started working on the project. So sincerely appreciate that. Um, we're branding the project Eight on Oak, obviously playing off of uh, the eight homes. And what we really love about the site is while it does have some topographic issues, the fact that it falls off like it does allows the scale, I, we think to be really, really good from a streetscape perspective. And then they'll look like two level homes for everybody that's walking or driving up and down Oak Street and Maple. Uh, because of the fact that we'll tuck the lower level, the terrace level and the garages down below. Um, so those cars will be out of view and I think that adds to the scale. Y'all are talking about the landscaping in front and little courtyards that each first six homes would have. And then the two in back, what is really attractive about that as well is that because it falls off, those will be basement lots, full basements. And so again, they'll only be two stories from uh, the parking level, if you will. So there'll be no uh, really visual impact to the first six homes. You look over it and those garages will be smaller. They'll be able to side in the one, uh, one car covered. And each of the drives behind the homes has enough room uh, for another vehicle or two vehicles to, to park. So it parks very well, which works out, I think, for our, our owners and their guests as they come in or more likely their family if they come up. These units will be primarily the first six will be three bedrooms, three and a half baths. So you'll have all living space on the main level. Uh, step up a few steps from, from uh, grade on Oak and that first your view is going to be out to the greenway. Uh, we're very excited to be next to the greenway. There'll be no future development. Um, I will mention that the home that is on Maple that had been on the market is owned by Robert Wright out of Florida. Uh, Bucky is his, is his name. And uh, he sent me a text this morning and said, hey, good luck tonight. Please let council know that uh, very, very excited about your plans. It'll be enhancing our property, which they've taken off the market currently because it feels like it's Eight on Oak is built out that might uh, even establish a, a better feel for that corner. So um, but we haven't fully launched or set the, the package out. We're very excited about hopefully doing that tomorrow. Um, but we do have uh, serious discussions and reservation agreements uh, passing back and forth with uh, four people right now, uh, out of the eight. That never know, in the real estate business, never know if it's a deal till it's a deal. Uh, but Pat and uh, his wife B are helping us with the marketing and so um, again, very pleased with that. Our builder um, is a group that's our partner actually, and they've been up here in the Plateau building. I don't think they've done anything in Highlands uh, city proper, but they've done a lot at um, Whiteside, at Glen Cove, at Coliseum. Um, so very high-end uh, home builder and partner called the Pradera Group. You can look at their website and see, Pradera. Uh, they're based out of Atlanta, but they've been, I think, up here probably six years plus. Um, and so excited about that. And our architectural team uh, again, out of Atlanta, um, Bartos and Bishop, uh, super, super high-end, uh, trained Stan Dixon for a long period of time. And so uh, really get what we feel like is the, the look. Uh, we'll call them English cottage with a sort of a modern twist. Uh, but it'll be, I think. But it'll be, I think, blend in very well with the high-end residential that you guys have been, you know, very successful with over the past few years. So excited about that and happy to answer any other questions you might have relative to the product and the type.
Any questions?
I have a question slash concern on the parking, on the, the, the units that front on Oak. And I guess maybe, this may be more of a question for Michael. Was there any discussion about parking, the possibility of all of those parking places on Oak, since this is going to be right out their front door? Folks utilizing that parking rather than the parking on-site?
So the, are you talking about the public parking?
Yes.
So would you ask that question more time? I'm so sorry, Buzz.
The public parking on Oak Street?
Yep.
Since it's essentially right out the front door, would seem to me, if I were a owner of one of those units, to certainly be more advantageous to park there and just walk straight in rather than utilize the parking on-site? And I just wondered if there was any
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Finish.
Any consideration as far as town is concerned about limiting access? Or any thought about that as far as town's concerned and those parking spaces being utilized for these units rather than the provided on-site parking?
Yes, so I hadn't really thought about that one, and I could see what you were talking about. Now, I do know they are going to have a gated entry right there, and then I believe each unit's going to have an elevator at the bottom. So it would still, I mean, I could see people doing that. I don't know how it would stop.
I don't know how you would limit parking on a public street like that very easily.
Well, yeah, let me point out too, we've got a two-car garage underneath each of those.
Right, yeah.
And then we've got a 20-foot driveway
Right.
for the
But Buzz, what you're bringing up is, for the homeowner, do they want people parking in front of their?
No, I'm talking about the homeowner themselves. I mean, if it's raining and I'm bringing home a load of groceries, I'm going to park in front and go straight in.
But how do you, how do you limit that?
But you still gotta go downstairs.
No, I think
You park in the garage.
And not get wet.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think
Yeah, I blew that example.
So a couple of things. Number one, they're going to be full with people going to the liquor store. So they're not going to be available for
What is the, what's the elevation difference between the sidewalk and like the bottom floor of the homes?
Roughly 12 feet.
12, okay. So it's 12 feet below grade that basically from the rate.
Yeah, so you pull, you pull down, you've got the six garages below, and you've got, each garage has, well, they're optional, but we've, each of those six homes has an elevator shaft.
Sure.
We think that the majority of the owners will go ahead and put that in. But it'll primarily be used for, just as you're suggesting, is the, as the couple comes in, get their luggage upstairs, or if you're at the grocery store, to get your groceries upstairs. And what we're really selling is walkability. So what we see is that when you come in on a Friday afternoon and they're leaving Monday morning, your car is probably not moving. And you're going to watch your car parked out of the elements and say, now, if somebody's having a, you know, these aren't big units, so there not be dinner parties with, you know, 10 and 12 folks. But if you had a couple coming over, Pat and B coming over to visit.
No, I don't have a problem at all with visitors to the units.
Yes, yes.
My concern is with six units out there, all those parking places are going to be taken up by the unit owners themselves. I'm not so sure that they're going to come in on a weekend and just park the car and, and walk. You know, I see folks coming in, parking the car and changing clothes and going out to the waterfalls or something, you know, more coming and going rather than just a limited, hey, we're here for the weekend, so we're going to hide the car kind of thing. I wonder if there's a way to designate those parking spaces as public parking?
They are.
They are. But it's, but it's not on the street.
No, no, they are. There's existing street parking.
And they're not changing it.
They're not changing the curb location.
No, no, we're not changing.
Yeah, no, 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 I
But you're saying, so like, you could send out something to the homeowners association that says, leave this for public parking. If you own a home, park in your garage or whatever.
I think you would do that if we have problems with that. Honestly, if I'm coming and going, I want to make sure I have a parking place that's pretty close, and I would never know whether I'm just going to have a parking place that's close unless I go ahead and go around and park my parking place underneath my house.
I'm just being a devil's advocate. It's usual.
Any other questions? Thank you. And what I want to do now is open this up for public comment, if you want to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Don't go away there. All right, the floor is now open for any public comment if anyone would like to come and make a comment concerning this proposed development. Any comment? Okay, I don't believe we have any further comments from the public. So the next position would be a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Thank you. We have a public hearing that has been closed. The next item would be council action, and it seems to me that we've got several things at play here, Nick, that we need to, some guidance on how to proceed on, on this process. For example, we have a sewer easement request, sidewalk easement request that would be a part of this package of approval or not.
Okay, yeah. So like I mentioned before, we need to just get the applicant to state that both of those are conditions of this, this application that they are consenting to. And then we can, we can write, put something in writing that they sign, and it'll have to be signed in writing.
Okay, so I would ask the applicants to come back forward now that the hearing is closed.
This is conditional zoning. We can put it in as a condition. Otherwise, they don't get the zone.
But they need to, they need to state that they agree to that.
That's correct.
Well, they won't get it unless they do this.
Well, they do need to come in and say, yes, I want them to publicly come say they agree to, to those conditions.
Yes.
We agree to those conditions.
Other sidewalk
Yes, sir.
easement and others. Maintaining the trees.
And we would agree to give them an easement over the greenway space to, for their sewer.
Yes, you're making that request.
I presented a lot of these. Nobody ever asked if I was okay with it.
We can go.
And we will, we will put this in writing for
Yes, sir.
signatures.
I'll make a motion to approve the Parkside Partners B1 conditional zoning request.
With those conditions.
With those, with said conditions.
Based on the 2025 addenda drawings.
Yeah.
Addenda site plan.
Yeah.
Good job, yes.
Based on the recently submitted drawings.
Right. And I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I think we need to see the documentation. The documentation reducing the parking from 12 to 10 needs to be recorded.
Can, can we add that to your?
Yeah, add that to my motion as
Okay, so we've added that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, they've added that, yes.
And the second carries as well?
Mm-hmm. All right. Any other discussion before I call the vote? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Now, Michael, what else do we need to approve? The consistency?
Yeah, I mean, if I brought up this statement of consistency in the ordinance in there, I believe if it's just included in the agenda in the minutes, I don't believe you all actually have to state it, do they, Nick? Or do I just need to go ahead and state?
Yeah, so they need a motion to approve the consistency and reasonableness statement as presented in the agenda packet.
Okay.
I make a motion to that effect.
All right.
Second.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.
And the zoning map and zoning ordinance. Let's just go ordinance, ordinance and map, yeah.
Okay. We would make a motion on that, too.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Second.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Okay, thank you.
Now, would y'all approve again?
All right.
Don't worry, Gibby has it.
She's got it.
Gibby translates for us.
Gibby, do you have it?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. All right, our next item will be a report or update from Hotwire Communications. Mike Hall.
Mayor, I don't see Mike Hall or any representation from Hotwire here.
I guess we're table.
I guess we'll
They had requested, they were supposed to be on for January. They requested for February meetings, so.
Yeah. So we'll have to reschedule that.
They will.
They will, yes. And the nature of that would be to update us on the process, progress of building out the underground and other related issues. It's kind of interesting. I know that I talked to them earlier in the week where they were going around downtown working on the idea of creating a Wi-Fi system there. So maybe they'll be able to get back and, and update us on that, too. All right, we'll table it and move on to the next item. And that is the Christmas replacement. And Kay McCan is, I think, going to join us remotely to discuss this? Or Tina will?
But not remotely.
Why is all in for any questions? And she is, she is on the Zoom if there are any questions.
Okay.
He's under the weather, so that's why she's
All right.
All right, do you guys have your pictures of the, of your choices? There is the the one that we don't want here is, is an option.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can she speak into the microphone? I'm sorry.
I sure can. And then the one that we do want, and it would be a white lantern instead of the red because the red fades to pink. And so we would propose that the white one
Buzz.
muddy to gray?
Well, I probably, but you know.
Buzz, when I first was elected as Commissioner, you and I were on a committee to select the, the red lanterns that we have now. And that was like 12 years ago, and unfortunately it faded to pink. But I do support the, the continuation of the lanterns, and I do like the white. So I'd make a motion to approve the white.
Are these the size of the existing ones?
It's the same company, strangely enough, that we contacted, that these were originally purchased from. And so they, they, they have their records of the same sizes and everything.
One thing that Buzz and I learned 12 years ago was that when you look at the street decorations, that what the companies sell, they're few and far between, like the choices that are, that would be reasonable for Highlands. Do you remember that, Buzz?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we went through catalogs of it. It was like there were two choices. It was either dancing reindeer or
Right. Just a couple of comments. First of all, thanks to Josh and, and the team that what we recognized is that, obviously, over the years, the town's gotten smarter. They have a great storage system. You have a custom trailer where y'all can bring the gear in and out. So we were able to find, luckily, we didn't know if the same vendor was going to be available, but they were. So the spec is the same. So in terms of putting them up, taking them down, moving them, transporting them, storing them, and what they've set up, all that should be seamless and just a, a switch. So we're happy to support that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion out of that.
I'll second it.
And we're, we're talking about the same number of
Correct.
Replacing all of them.
All of them. It's, it's about a $50,000 spend.
But you're not, are you talking to expanding any? Because I'm, if I recall, did they go up Forest Street, like up the hill?
They stopped, I think, up at the ugly dog. I think it's about
There, and then they go out toward, almost to close to Foreman Road.
Originally didn't go to like the Highland Hiker, and we put them out there.
Yeah.
So that was in a
So it's the same footprint that is today.
Yeah, okay.
And, and then the only other thing, Mayor, we talked about this, and it's not it's part of the light selection, but we talked about after Christmas on Main Street, the non-holiday, but just the white Christmas lights that exist, maybe leaving those extended as winter lights through March. What was the day? March, like just into March, as a extension to just brighten up the town for those more dreary months. So if, if that could be added to consideration, that'd be awesome.
Let's do this motion first.
Great.
Because we have it on the floor. Commissioner Steeler seconded it by Commissioner Weller. Any further discussion?
Would the Chamber be purchasing them, or would they be reimbursing the town in the town purchase?
We would be purchasing.
Okay. I don't really care. I just didn't know if that made a difference.
And then we, we'll take possession, store them, and then our electrical crews, of course, will install them.
Great.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for, call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Could Buzz and I get one of the pink lanterns?
Yes. Ask Josh about it.
Well, and those will
We'll have 50 of them, whatever they are.
Buzz and I'll take four.
Okay, the next
Wait, they wanted to know about the
Yeah, we're going to ask, I'm going
Okay.
The next would be that idea of keeping those lights up in those center trees down Main Street. I will make one observation. The way they put them in, I wish they could either add more something to where it kind of fills out the whole tree. It looks like sometimes it's half-done.
I have talked to her about that, and she said it would require a very large, like a bucket truck that would actually stop traffic. And that's why they haven't done that. If they can have permission to do that, that may be something that we can talk to them about, but that's been the issue.
Are you talking about the trees like in the center?
Yes.
Have those little, they're, they're like sparkling snowflakes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in other words, if we're going to do it, let's do it the right way, but it might require getting some gear in there and disrupting traffic a little bit, so.
Okay.
I think, I think we're going to do it right. We ought to do it.
Let's do it, yeah.
It looks a little half-done.
Yeah, I agree.
I understand. I think they just didn't think that they would have the permission, you know, to stop the traffic. So I'll let them know that they can do that now. Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
So how long did you want to extend it to the block?
Till March, just a little more. You guys can decide. Just a, just a few more months.
Just because it's so dreary.
Same time as the, it's the ice skating rink?
March 15.
Yeah.
That works.
That makes
Yeah.
When does the ice skating rink?
Well, it, you never know. It depends on weather, but it's usually the first weekend of March.
Yeah.
That works. Yeah.
I mean, it's logic.
And if you look in the consent agenda, like January was a very good month with 1,303 people attending the ice skating. Okay, do we have a motion to approve that in a second?
So just the ones in the trees in the center of town?
Yes. Okay. All in favor?
Yeah, get a motion.
We have a motion in a second. Yes. All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Thank you very much. All right, next is the Chamber of Commerce building lease.
Concert event request.
Oh, I'm sorry. Concert event, yes. I'm sorry. So many chambers here tonight. Okay, the concert event request.
Yeah, so the request is, we had an opportunity to extend our Saturdays on Pine. One additional Saturday, there was an event planned that was canceled. And so we thought we could kick off our Saturdays on Pine by just adding a Saturday. This would be the same format. It would be a free concert, be from 6:00 to 8:30. It would be a band. Everyone would be invited to come, and there would be no vendors or anything like that. It'd be the same format as we would do typically for a Saturdays on Pine, just one additional Saturday on Saturday, May 10. just one additional Saturday on, uh, Saturday, May 10th.
So move. Second.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, item 14, the Chamber building lease.
So, um, where we are with the lease, obviously, this is open. We're on a month-to-month. Um, the last time it was brought up on the agenda, it was, uh, discussed. As of today, we have the lease sits with you guys with, we don't have a final revised version in our possession to review and approve, um, or support. Um, some commentary on that is obviously, um, we would love to have a, a lease finalized. I think that would be good, uh, for the town and for the Chamber. Um, we are absolutely open. We initially talked about, um, renewing in the original term, renewing the original terms for, um, 10 years. There was some, um, energy around that not being ideal. Uh, I think it was mentioned initially going to three, and then there was a kind of a compromise to move to five. Um, I'd ask you guys to consider a five-year lease. I think from a, um, from a Chamber board and, and staff perspective, we can live with a five-year. Um, in term, you know, the terms of the lease, um, are, um, are such that we would like to renew the lease for that building, which, um, of its original intent, when the town came in possession of it, was for it to be the visitor's center for always. Um, so we would like for that to continue. Um, and then, um, we would like to continue to support the town in ways that we, uh, can, um, that would, um, promote, you know, giving additional dollars to where it makes sense, so that, um, you guys feel like, um, w- we're, um, in addition to maintaining the building, uh, making improvements, having a great welcome center for our visitors, um, that we have, um, you know, a, a lease that we can all live with and move forward with. And, um, it, uh, what I would ask is that you guys finalize your terms so it's such that we can review, and then hopefully we can get a lease and move forward, uh, over the next five years. So Josh, could, are, are we, last I understood, we were looking at other opportunities of how this payment, I guess I would say.
The last, the last request by the board was to, um, pay for the lease for John Lepoli's restroom facilities.
Yes.
But.
I can speak to that. So, so there was an idea outside of the lease itself. It was kind of, I'll just say, uh, to have a discussion of, um, the town square owned by, uh, John Lepoli, uh, as that, um, agreement with the town to take care of the cleaning of those bathrooms. Um, we approached, we being the, the Chamber, approached, uh, Mr. Repol- Lepoli directly to see if we could, uh, go into an agreement directly with him to pay for the main, the maintaining of those bathrooms. Um, that is not on the table as an option.
No.
Um, uh, as a result, uh, Kay and myself met with Josh and Mayor to talk about, hey, it's not about, um, us resisting how we can help the town, um, or figure out a way to make this happen. So then we were like, how can we make that happen? Um, Josh presented us with some information, uh, that, um, applies to the general fund, uh, of the Town of Highlands. Uh, there were two specific line items that were very closely aligned with a, a number that, um, I think the town and the Chamber have kind of come to as what we were trying to achieve. Uh, and we have agreed, uh, verbally to work within those parameters, should the town see that, um, as an opportunity for us to support.
So the item that was discussed, two items actually discussed, was the town's landscaping that the town bids every year. Uh, that includes all the, the landscaping, uh, down Main Street, front of Town Hall. Uh, there's some, I think there's some waiting, some things that goes along with that, runs, I think the current contract's $35,000. Tate Landscaping has it. Uh, also, the, um, the Founder's Park maintenance, which I think Tate Landscaping currently has, I think it's around $23,000.
Mm-hmm.
Um, both those were given to you guys.
Yes.
And I think you were going to discuss those with, with your board.
Yes, and so, uh, directionally, the one, the higher one of around the 35,000 was directionally where we were aligned. Um, and we're happy to, to continue that conversation.
So this, uh, these funds basically to clean the restrooms or pay for the town's landscaping, both comes out of the general fund. So paying one, paying the other, it's, it's still coming out of the same funding source.
But this way, we can work directly with you and not have someone in between the Chamber and the town, which was the, where it fell through with the other opportunity.
Could, could we not identify a certain amount of money over a five-year period? I mean, certain amount per year for five years, and then on an annual basis, between the Chamber and administration, determine exactly what that means?
Yes.
I mean, you see what I'm saying? I mean, we have 35,000, you may get a new bid and it's 42.
Yes.
But are we gonna do 40? Is it 42? Is it 35? Do we just say $40,000? And, and then this year it's for that, and next year it might be for something different, but there's a commitment.
Yeah.
To, to, to pay those types of elements with the town. I mean, it's still a commitment. You're still gonna be paying.
Our commitment is, without any further discussion, is $40,000. There's one caveat, and this is something we've talked about. If our top line changes by a certain percentage, because we cannot control that, right? We're not a for-profit. We, we are, so we're subject to revenue that is generated by tax dollars, right? The only caveat where we would, and I'd, directionally, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. However, if our top line reduces by a, a large percentage, we would, may need to flex on that amount. You know, if it's, if we're committing to 40 and we don't have the 40, but we have 32, we'll, you know, whatever that percentage is. Directionally, that's how we can comfortably be in this space. Um, I know that the, on behalf of the board and the staff, um, it's not about holding back. It just is what it is. We have to be fiscally responsible with tax dollars, and, and that's the only consideration I would ask for you.
Understand, and if there's this, if there's terminology within that to allow that to flex, I understand that.
Right.
But I don't, I'm, I'm questioning whether or not we need to identify a specific item right now, or just an amount of money. Towards mutually agreeable.
I think the reason we have to identify a specific thing is they have to.
Correct.
To list what their money goes to.
I can't build you a road, but I can maintain beautification.
But it can, it could be landscape maintenance.
The regulations on the dollar.
We could list it under landscape.
Correct.
And it could be towards either the Main Street or Pine Street, whatever, wherever the dollars come out.
Correct.
Exactly.
That is correct.
Just Main Street or just Pine Street.
Eric's spot on. That's exactly what we should.
It's landscape.
Great.
And it's 45, it's.
A hundred, yes.
35 for downtown and another five towards the Main Street.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And who coordinates all that? Who arranges it? Well, I think what, you know, would need be, the, the answer that we're looking for is it, are, are you guys gonna take over that? Or would we still bid it out and y'all just reimburse us money?
Correct. That would, that way we don't, that way it's your, you have the dollars and it's your discretion. As long as it fits, if we're ever audited, we can just, we can say it was used for these things. You didn't try to build a road.
But if our landscape maintenance is never gonna be below $40,000 for all of the elements.
Correct.
If we just put 40 towards it.
Correct.
Say that's what it is, and it has a flex phrase it within it, I, I, I think it's, it becomes a non-issue.
Do any dastardness, Nick, if that works? What? Our, our attorney, can we, can we build a, uh, a lease that has that commitment in it, it's saying that it would be going towards that? A commitment of $40,000 a year?
Yes, yes, you can, you can do that. Um, and then the, the, the question about whether or not with occupancy taxes, what, what you can use for that, um, I think, you know, that's what we just need to.
We, we've been down that road.
And we're, we're comfortable with that. That's been vetted from our end. We feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say one more time, and everybody knows where I stand on this, but in, um, 2012, 13, I was the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, and I was the one that sat in the meetings with the donor that gave us that building. And I'm gonna say one more time, the individual wanted the opposite side of the, of that intersection to be the post office, and they wanted the, uh, opposing corner to be the Chamber of Commerce. That's the way they wanted it. So I think it is absolutely wrong that we're even negotiating a five-year lease. If we're up to me, it'd be a lease in perpetuity. I'm just gonna say that.
Thank you.
Like, I think it is absolutely wrong that we're sitting here trying to profit off of a building that was given to the town for the purpose of the Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center, period.
With that said, then, this whole issue has gone around the original request for the TDA Fund to clean the bathrooms. This is the 1985 enabling legislation, 40 years ago. It is very narrow. It is, in my opinion, obsolete, and other counties have realized this over the years. And now they have, for example, the 1997 reform that says you can spend one-third toward tourist infrastructure type things, which would mean that this issue of, oh, we can't, can't clean bathrooms for tourists would be off the table. It, whatever the board wants to do, that's fine. But I've even talked now to some county folks. It's time to get our legislative delegation to come together and just simply say, let's upgrade this legislation to at least the 1997 reform, or even more, to where we don't have to have this conversation. That, you know, things like that can be done without any concern about, well, is this acceptable or legal or not? Because it would be built into the legislation. So, um, you know, that's my position. Um, I've read this legislation. I've read the other legislation, and I just think it's time for the county to up, update that. And it's not reinventing the wheel. It's just asking our legislative de- delegation to go and say, can Macon County fall like so many other counties under this legislation now? It'd be a local bill that could be, you know, put forward. So.
Good.
So whatever the board wants to do.
Tonight, we need to direct our attorney to put that language in.
Okay.
Get y'all disgusted, what y'all came up with.
The $40,000 a year.
And then we would give it to you.
Yes.
And then you could vet it, and then we could finally reach an agreement here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Then I will entertain a motion for us to direct the attorney to do that.
It would be for five years with $40,000 going toward town landscape.
So move.
Yeah.
Second.
You have a motion, no second.
Who made the motion? Eric did? And you made the.
Buzz made the second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by raising your hand and saying aye. And opposed? All right. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, the next item will be a requir- request from the Highlands and Mountaintop Rotary Clubs, Randy Foster. You need another chair?
No, I just, I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board, for, uh, letting us present this proposal to y'all tonight. I'm gonna ask, I'm Randy Foster, president of the Highlands Rotary. I'm gonna ask Kath Connolly to give the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Randy. Hi, everyone. I'm Kath Connolly Hudson, president of Mountaintop Rotary. Um, I did send in slides. Do we have the slides?
I think we do.
It'll be on that screen most of the.
Yeah, they're coming.
They'll be on that screen, okay. And it's getting late, and I will make it quick. And while we're waiting for the slides, I'll just go ahead and start. Um, a peace pole. Um, not everyone is familiar. I know there's a lot of Rotarians in this room, but not everybody understands and has perhaps even seen a peace pole. So this evening, Randy and I just wanted to share with you just a little bit of background, just a few minutes, because I think that the context is really important before we just say, we would like to place peace pole in Highlands. And everyone is thinking, well, I don't even know what a peace pole is. Um, a peace pole is a monument, and we don't have a picture of it yet. But every peace pole displays a message, and it's the same message on every single one. It is, may peace prevail on earth.
There you go.
Okay, let's go to the, let's go to slide three. There we go. Um, typically, the, the phrase, may peace prevail on earth, is in the language of the country where the peace pole is placed. And then, in addition to that, it has other languages that are meaningful for that location. Um, Rotary International adopted the whole sense of having peace poles around the world. Um, it's not religious. A peace pole is not religious. It's not political. It just provides a dedicated space where you could consider and reflect on peace. It's as simple as that. But let me go to the next slide. I just want to share with you something about the beginning of a peace pole. This was written, the whole phrase was, came up, um, from a leader, a peace builder in Japan, right after World War II. In 1955, Masahisa Goy planted the first peace pole in Japan. Then, over the next 20 years, there were, started to be several hundred, and then they started to appear around the world. Let's go to the next slide. And at some point, Rotary International started to adopt this idea of a peace pole. But you have to remember, Rotary has had peace and conflict resolution as a focus area from 1914. So it made sense for them to adopt this idea of a peace pole. So let's go to the next slide. And what you, what you see here, this is just a snapshot from an application. There is an organization, the World Peace Organization, and they have built this application, and it's very interactive, kind of like Google Earth. You can zoom in any place, any town in the whole world, and it'll show you if there's a peace pole there. And then on the left side of the screen, it tells you the location and the information. Today, there are 250,000 peace poles in every single country in the world. It's our hope that there can be a peace pole in Highlands. So let's go to the next slide, please. There are 12 registered peace poles in North Carolina. Four of them are in western North Carolina. Georgia has nine peace poles. The image that is shown here, it's hard to see from the scale, but it's, it's quite large, and it's a marble peace pole in Jasper, Georgia. Let's go to the next slide. So Randy and I are here today to ask the Town of Highlands to approve our Rotary Clubs to place a peace pole in a public space. Peace poles can be found anywhere. You can find them in churches, museums, schools, parks, private gardens. But we wanted the first one in Highlands to be in a public space, and that way it's accessed by everyone. I'm gonna just share with you the design, so you can start to think about what our peace pole would look like. We chose black locust. Um, it's a tree that's native to the eastern U.S., but it's widely cultivated and here in the mountains, and known for its strength and durability. On this, if you can imagine a 12-foot black locust post, four sides, and on each side, going down the side of it, etched, engraved into the wood, are the four languages. The four languages that we feel represent the historical and cultural influences. The four languages that we feel represent the historical and cultural influences of Highlands. English, Cherokee, Spanish, and Gaelic. Let's go to the next slide. Here's just a little glimpse. It's just a small drawing, but you can see that we envisioned this twelve-foot post to be surrounded in some sort of hardscaping, perhaps, local mountain stone with some seating areas. Because the idea is, it is a place for reflection. It's not just something you walk by. So, you know, as I said before, a peace pole can be anywhere. It can be on private property. Most of them are in public spaces, and we just feel like it would be important for Highlands to have one in a public space. If you go to the next slide, please. We just took that drawing and superimposed it right out here, just to give an idea of what a peace pole could look like in a public space. And if you go to the next slide. Our timeline, it might seem like a short timeline, but believe me, Randy and I started the discussions last May. And then, we had the design and everything ready through the summer, and then we had Helene. And as you know, Rotary's been very busy with disaster relief. And so we're just now coming back to this. We have sourced the wood and the people that would work on the creation of this. So that is our ask today. We're just asking for approval that a peace pole be placed in a public space.
And are you, would you provide the hardscape around it?
Yes.
We're gonna provide everything.
Everything.
And that out front here is where you would want that?
We're, we're coming to y'all to help decide where the best place is.
I mean, I think that's, yeah, I mean, if it went, if it were like, I mean, my initial thought was if it were in the park, I'd want the founder, the founders group to be involved in that. But if it's out here, I'm totally behind it. World needs more peace.
That's what we think. And it, to us, it doesn't really matter, just as long as the public and visitors can have access to it.
I love the idea.
What we want to do is to go ahead and source, we sourced the wood, but we want to get it sent up here to the mill, which is in Skaglin, and where we can get it inscribed in a CNC machine that will cut all the languages and all, everything in the, in the pole. And that's gonna take us a little while, but during that time, we can tweak the design of the, where it goes, and how big it is, and everything like that. Our goal would be to have everything wrapped up by the first amendment. The district conference is May the tenth.
Yeah.
And we'd like to have it up by then.
I mean, like, I mean, I'm just asking Lamar, obviously, is there anything in that area? I mean, that'd be my only concern, is checking with staff to make sure there's nothing in that vicinity that would.
Well, as you can see in the picture, you got to have some outdoor line, or some power to that, that sign.
Yeah.
We would need to locate those in advance of picking the exact location, just so you can avoid it.
And, and that's just, I mean, that's just an idea. It's just sort of put on there. Obviously, we just are hoping that the town would provide the guidance of where it would go. I'd like to think about where it would go.
Yeah, there's a lot of options.
And I want Nick to weigh in on this. And one of the issues would be, who would maintain this venue?
We would.
We would. Both of the Rotary Clubs.
Nick, would you give your opinion?
Okay, so the, the First Amendment is a consideration that you have to take into account here. Now, there is a very famous U.S. Supreme Court case that dealt with placing monuments on public property. And essentially, what, what, what the, what the case law says is that if you have a monument on, on property, regardless of what the message is, that it has to, in order for it to be the type of monument that you can control what it, what the message is, or who you allow to put on the public property, it has to be government speech. And in order to be government speech, this has to be something that can be donated by Rotary, but it has to be owned, maintained, and held by the town. Otherwise, it is not government speech, and in which case, you're creating a public forum. If you create a public forum, you cannot discriminate on any kind of speech whatsoever. So you would have to let anybody put any type of pole that they would want, or any type of sign. So my advice to the, the board is to, if they are interested in this, is to allow it to be government speech and be owned, maintained, and operated by the town.
What is government speech, though? I mean, kind of talk about that for a second.
Sure. So government speech is when you, is, it's when the government is speaking and they are owning, operating, and maintaining the message, whatever that message is. If it's a monument, if it's a sign, if it's a speaker, whatever it is, it's when the government speaks. They don't have the same First Amendment restrictions that you do when private speech occurs. Private speech occurs on public property, there are certain kinds of forums. Parks, public squares, public town halls. Those things are public forums, and the courts give great, great, you know, precedent to ensuring that those are open to everyone, to every kind of religion, to every kind of message. It's, it's what's called content-based neutrality. You have to ensure that there's content-based neutrality. So with government speech, you don't have to do that. So government speech, you can say, if another person comes in, you can say, no, we're not going to do that, because that's not the government speech that we want to have. If it, if, if you open this up to being a private monument that is maintained and privately, then you have to open, open that up without regard to content base. You have to be content neutral on that.
So, so.
Does that answer the question?
A gift or donation to the town. We accept it with the responsibility of maintaining it in everything. And in that way, it becomes
Government speech.
Our venue and our, yeah.
But do you see any alarming with that verbiage? I mean, do they think, like, red flags with the verbiage of?
Doesn't look, doesn't look like it matters.
No.
I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't hear. What was the question?
My, my question was, do you see any red flags with that verbiage? I mean, it seems harmless to me. I mean, it seems like, who wouldn't agree with that?
Right. No, I, I don't, I don't see any, it is not a religious message, which then has different establishment clause considerations. And, and, and like was said, that's, it's not religious. So, no, I don't see any problem with the verbiage, but it doesn't matter what the verbiage is. If, if you, if you allow it to be private, it has to be opened up. And if you if you're keeping government, then you don't. I can't hear anything that's being said, if somebody's talking.
He would, they would, if, if we owned it, they would volunteer to take care of it. Is that something that's doable?
Gray area.
Ah, yeah, that's a, that's a gray area. I don't know. I mean, I, I would, I would say if, if it's, if it's clear that it is the town's monument, and it's the town's peace pole, if they want to allow donations in kind, or they want to cert, you know, have a contract for upkeep and maintenance, they can do that.
Yeah, but we could accept it.
I'd like to make a simple statement. We would offer to maintain it or to compensate the town for it maintained. I mean, let's make this a partnership. And the other thing that I've just been thinking until tonight, and I never thought about this, but Rotary Club's one hundred and twenty years old this year internationally. Highlands is one hundred and fifty years old, and we'll be celebrating that. Our Rotary Club of Highlands is eighty years old. So it just seems like this is a good time to do it.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I like the idea. I think it's great. The only thing I would want to know, though, is, like, I, I know you have an image, but I'd like to see, like, when you, if you refine it, say, we kind of agree in principle, but refine it, and then come up with an exact location where then we can look at a plan and.
Right.
Fits a location.
Correct.
Fits a location.
We're working with Jim Morton. That's who Jed is.
Okay.
And he's well aware of what, you know, that what's gonna be needed.
Yeah.
To put it in. We're gonna have to have construction details in.
Correct. And I mean, that's just something I think. I like, I mean, at first, I was racking my brain on where it might go, and this is one location that I actually like the idea.
I do, yeah. But there's a lot of people, like, just that.
There's a lot of people come to lunch here. They sit out here having lunch. It's.
Yes, that's right.
People driving by, and even, as good as the police department's been doing now, everybody slowed down, so, a little bit.
So we could, we could do, we could do a motion tonight in principle with the provision that you would come back with a specific location in more detail about.
We would, we would.
We would like you to choose the location.
I, I like this location.
Yeah.
Actually, I don't like this.
Oh, you don't?
Really?
I think it, and we got the sign, we got the picnic tables. It looks crowded. This, this tranquility and reflection and those kind of things, I, I think would lend itself, and I'm not sure where, to a quieter, not so traffic-y, noisy kind of place.
That's, that's kind of opposite of what we were thinking. We wanted it to be more accessible and not off someplace else.
Highly visible.
Highly visible.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not saying that you have to take my suggestion. I'm just saying I'd like to think about.
Well, that's, that's what we want to do, is be able to work with the town.
Yeah.
Over the next month, whoever we, we need to work with to get this stuff up and going, we'll get the pole ordered and get all that stuff taken care of, and we'll be ready to go when, you know, right first of April.
I think that's key to us, is that it's in a public place.
Yeah.
That's what we're asking for approval for.
To agree in principle, to concept.
Yeah, to the concept.
Location to be determined.
Yes.
Come back next month with some ideas of thinking of like rec park. I'm just trying to think of all the areas that we would that the town owns that would be, that would suit, that would be the best suited.
I noticed, though, when it said four cities and the towns in the, in western North Carolina, Franklin was on there. Where is the one in Franklin?
It's in the, it's at a church. I've looked them all up. There's actually the closest one, is at the mountain.
Yeah, the mountain retreats. Twenty years.
And it's, it's a small one, and it's aluminum, but it's, they're like one of their buildings.
Okay.
Speaking of size, you say it's, it's twelve feet tall.
Mm-hmm.
Plus the two-foot base. Pole itself is twelve.
So it's fourteen feet tall.
So it'd be fourteen overall.
Yeah. I think we've sourced the sixteen-foot post right now.
Well, we haven't figured that out yet. We'll have to put footing and anchors and everything like that, so that's yet to be figured out.
Do you actually have the locust?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And they're gonna cut it?
Yep.
And it's coming to a mill here, and he has this.
Mill done escaped off of Buck Knob.
I've, I've used locusts and had it milled. It's, it's a tough wood to cut.
Yeah, but that's why, you know, they say it lasts two years longer than raw.
It'll last. It does.
It's like John bought in October. The dirt will wear out before the pole.
That's right.
And I agree in principle, and I think we should, I, I know, I think you all should come back, you and get Jim and everybody else, come back with some options on locations and, and an actual finished drawing that says this is where it would be. And then I think we have something to react to, potentially approved. But I agree in principle. Agree.
Yeah.
I make that a motion.
Yeah, you make it a motion.
I'd like to see actual dimensions.
Yep.
Well, that's, that's what, it's right now, it's about six-foot diameter is what we're thinking about, the stone seating around. So it's gonna be, it's not gonna be small. The first, first thing I saw that we did was just pole itself, which is landscaped around.
Okay.
I think you just put Jim to work.
Yeah. Okay. And Commissioner Weller, you, you've made a motion?
I have to.
Would you articulate it one more time?
I will. I'm making a motion to agree in principle to the concept, location to be determined, and we would like you all to come back with a location, locations proposed for our consideration and potential final approval at the next meeting.
We will work with the Rotary Clubs to find a location.
Correct.
Size and. Yes. Okay.
And design.
And any of us would be willing to talk about that.
Okay, because it, we are, are wanting to push through pretty quick, so.
I understand. I mean, I commend you on your schedule.
Well, we were delayed in getting, yeah. We were, you know, become the hurricane, Christmas.
Understand.
People just not being around. It's been hard to get everybody.
But it is a, it is a permanent item, so I want to make sure that we, we check all the boxes and not regret it in two months.
One, one thing I do have a question about is since we're working on town property, what are the requirements as far as people working on it?
I will defer that answer, or question, I should say.
That's a good question. Liability, insurance, probably.
Workers' comp liability?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there gonna be a certain company that?
Well, we're gonna try to get some, we're gonna try to get some of the Rotarians to help us with this, like Bryson's or somebody else to help do some of the work, even like take landscaping, and try to get somebody to help do stonework and everything like that. So, but I, I, it's one of those things that I figured that you want liability.
Yeah, just let us know who, who you decide to use.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a second. Any further discussion? Let me call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
We'll be looking forward to your presentation. All right. The next item would be Highway sixty-four electrical distribution line upgrade bid approval. Lamar Nix.
In your agenda package, you will see a cover letter from Progressive Engineering Consultants, Incorporated. And I'll, I'll go through it brief. Sealed bids were received publicly, openly, and read on behalf of the Town of Highlands on Tuesday, January the fourteenth, at the Office of Progressive Engineering for the construction of said line. This was actually advertised and bid twice. They didn't receive three bids, so they had to re-advertise, you know, per state law. At the end of the day, as shown by the attached bid tabulation, Southeastern Transmission and Distribution LLC submitted the most attractive proposal in the total amount of six hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and seven cents. They reviewed the proposal, find it to be in compliance with specifications. It's also in compliance with a very, very nice timeline. And it's within the accepted range of what you would expect that bid to be. If you look in the bid tabulation, you can see who the other bidder was. Someone we have worked with before here in town several times, Williams, but they were not the low bid. But one thing I want to point out, if you'll see their completion time, Southeastern Transmission and Distribution has a very nice timeline, fits in with what we need it to be. And that clock starts ticking when they have a notice to proceed, which is deep into the contract documents, so it's pretty important to get started headed that way as soon as we can. One thing I want to remind the board, and I ask your leniency, with, keep in mind, if approved, during this process, once we get an actual contract in place, I need to add, change some of the units to include the work I mentioned earlier, which will connect the distribution system of NC one oh six to the distribution system on twenty-eight, a very short distance, Mitchell's Turn as well, Illinois. Across that private property, we have the easement in hand. We're already ready to work on that. But I hesitate to do anything until we get a, you know, this in place.
And we can do that, we, that's enough of a change order to do that without bidding it?
I think it's simply a change order. It's a small, it'll be a small amount.
It's just a change order. I just, just keep that in mind.
Okay.
It's a very small amount relative.
When you were giving us the update, I was just saying, if it's that small, we don't need it, we wouldn't have to bid it anyway, right?
We're gonna do the pole work right away, work ourself before this gets here. It's gonna be reconducting, a little bit of framework.
So let me ask, what is experience rate modifier?
I'm not sure what that is. I've never, I've never heard of that one. You'll have to ask, I'll have to ask Bob.
Point nine seven, the other one's point five eight.
That's, that's the best answer of the night.
Well, it's the honest one.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know what any of it is, so.
I have no clue what that is. But I do know, I have some people that vouch for them as being a company, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this part of the two-point-eight million that we?
It is a part of it.
Okay.
And that's one, one of the things I was wanting to talk to you about. We're gonna, hopefully, at the end of the day, we'll up that figure a little bit to carry for the change order, but it's not gonna be that much relative to this. We will be halfway. We will be halfway there.
With this.
For significantly less than 2.8.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I mean, I realize half of 2.8.
The other portion of this will be doing a double circuit up the Franklin Road to be able to divide the inner workings of town in, in half. It's gonna take two circuits. Uh, it's much more expensive work. So I think we're headed the right direction. I think we're well within a timeframe, and I think budget-wise, we're doing very well.
Okay, I just want to make sure this wasn't an addition to the 2.8.
No, this is part of what y'all had already agreed to do.
Wanted to clarify that.
And I did want to thank, uh, Joy Wilson and Jeff Paris with Duke.
And Jerry Wright.
And Jerry Wright that is now retired. They have worked real closely with us to, to pull this feed in from Highlands Falls Country Club. They're gonna have to upgrade their line to meet us. And they're scheduled to go, uh, I think next month.
Oh, wow.
Uh, so they'll be, they'll be completed to us well, well, uh, before we get completed to them. But they, if, if it wasn't for their work and their calculations on, uh, like to shore it off.
You couldn't beat the cooperation we've had out of those three people.
Which is wild.
It's been great.
Okay.
Now, just so you'll know, the limits of construction. It will be 64 basically from Maple Street to slightly beyond the city limits. There, uh, there's a pull-off on the right if you're going towards Caxton, right in that area. That's, uh, that's construction limits for us.
As you, right as you cross the creek?
Right after you cross the creek. And Duke will meet us to that point.
So you want to motion to approve Southeastern Transmission?
Yes, we do. Yes.
You're making the motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, do I have a second? Got a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Thank you.
Lamar, real quick, are you gonna be doing the tree work on Dillon Road next, next week like you and I had talked about?
That is our intention.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that.
That's our intention. We had two days set aside next week. When we had those dates set aside, we were not aware of the outage that's gonna take place next week.
Cause that's why I was questioning how it came into.
We did not anticipate that happening at the same time, but we're not gonna let it slow us down. We, we've waited a long time to get these trees down. So hopefully that.
And if, yeah, and again, if you want to use, obviously, Arnold Road or the practice tee there, they'll help themselves.
It would just be nice to set a crane up there in that parking lot rather than block traffic, so.
Since we're just talking here, and we have Lamar here. Is that hole there at South Street? Where 28, is that ours or is that?
Well, we tried to punt it to the DOT, but they didn't accept it.
Oh, okay. I was gonna try.
We tried. And, uh, it's, it's temporarily patched. Once they hunted it back to us.
Okay, that little, that little place that we made the change.
Why it has a base failure, I don't know. It's got a base failure.
Obviously, cause it sunk.
And with the weather, you can't really dig it out and pave it like it needs to be. So we put some bag asphalt temporary patch in it for now. When the weather opens up, we will probably saw cut it and dig down pretty deep, build a base and build it back up.
Agree with DOT to do that thing originally, right?
Yes.
But it's ours, not theirs.
Uh, apparently.
Okay.
It's not that big a deal. It needs better weather.
I was trying to make it their fault, so they had to come back.
Well, that was tried.
Okay, thank you, Lamar. Okay, our last item, budget amendment, police vehicle replacement, and Chief Holland, I don't think's here, but Captain McCall, are you gonna do the presentation?
Slow clap.
The award winner.
So first of all, uh, Chief Holland wanted me to apologize for her not being here, but she had another assignment to deal with. Uh, so what we're asking for is a budget amendment because normally we ask for two patrol cars per year, and that would be after July. But we found a vehicle that was brand new in Cleveland, Georgia. But through, um, it's all, it's, it was in Hayesville when we went to look at it. It would save the town $13,000 to $15,000 in that. Normally, uh, we're gonna pay, uh, it's $39,000 for this vehicle. Which is $3,500 less just from what we were gonna pay to buy new. This is still new, don't get me wrong. 78 miles on it. However, it had hail damage. We went and looked at it. They have promised that they will replace the hood and all of the, the areas that we could see. And we're supposed to go look at it again tomorrow to see if we actually want to buy it. The, the reason I'm saying we'll, we will save $13,000 to $15,000 on this vehicle as a whole is because it also includes the Havis console where all the radios go. It includes the pedestal where the computer sits. It includes the inmate cage. It has blue lights, siren, all the controls already. And basically, the only thing that we would need to do is put a radio, a printer, and a gun rack. And in the very back of the car, there is a huge metal safe with a, a lock on it. So if any evidence or anything needed to be in there. So it is a huge savings for the town if we get this vehicle.
That and the D.C. House will say kinda high on it.
That too.
And, and the advantage is this police cruiser basically will be ready now instead of.
Instead of waiting until, if, yeah, if we wait until the budget July 1, usually it's pretty close to December before we get the car because of all the outfitting and everything else. So, and it's already got a blue light on the top too, so.
So this is a car we were intending to buy with the next budget here. We're pushing it up.
Doing it early.
Correct.
Yes.
In order to save money.
Now, obviously, if we get over there and they haven't repaired it to where, you know, it looks nice, we're not gonna do it. So.
Any other questions?
Is that the, but what, what is this thing we have in the packet here? On page 116.
The budget amendment?
Yeah.
So it's, it's part of the, uh, the money that came to us for the equipment in the kitchen. So that was last year. So we've already accounted for that. So that money is, is miscellaneous funds that come in. So Rebecca was using it in order to purchase, because it's general fund, in order to purchase the vehicle.
Okay.
We were being reimbursed.
We were being reimbursed, but it's in a different budget here.
Okay, okay. Cause I couldn't make head in your tails as well.
Yeah, I had to clarify, but therefore this money's coming in. It's free to use as miscellaneous funds. So that's, that's what she was gonna use to buy the.
Okay, I just, I, I couldn't ever see on here.
Police cruiser.
So this, this 51,000 is what we're, we're approving.
No, we're approving 41 for the vehicle.
Yeah.
Oh, and the other expense of 10,179?
Yes, it will, it will be for other, other miscellaneous funds.
Okay, okay. So that just gets it in our books.
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
That's what I couldn't figure out.
Yeah.
So we need a, a motion to approve a budget amendment to purchase a police vehicle.
A, a purchase, but also acknowledge these funds that we got in. That's what the other, that's what the whole 51,000 is. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what that is, what you mentioned during your report. Yeah.
So your motion would be to acknowledge those funds and purchase the vehicle.
You got it.
Okay.
If it's.
You want me to come test out that inmate cage or?
If you would like to.
Okay.
Well, you got $300 for the liquor.
We've, we've got that. Who's our second, second right here? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Okay, thank you. All right, well, go kick the tires. Okay, thank you.
You can pick me up tomorrow at the club. I'll come with you.
All right.
Right back in the cave.
We're at the end of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank y'all.